We'll have department heads right now. Noah?
Thank you. So we've been quite busy upstairs. As we discussed before, we had a very busy year last year. We are starting this year in the same fashion. I think we count twenty-seven trial informations that have been filed or are to be filed beginning with January one. Last week, we had a three-day jury trial on a neglect or abuse of child, child endangerment trial. Thankfully, we came back, the jury came back and appealed to verdict on all three counts. Sentencing is currently set for late March in that case. Today, we will also have a jury trial proceeding on a domestic abuse case. And Friday, we will have a hearing on education in a sexual assault of a juvenile case. So we have been quite busy with serious stuff upstairs, and it sounds like it is going to continue in that fashion. So yeah, it has been a busy one for us over the past several months.
Thank you. Bill, do you have anything? Becky?
Pretty much did as unusual. I ended my application office last Monday, and we did come up with a letter, so I will start doing reviews this week.
Is that it? Road repair crews, whichever one of you guys is...
Well, I can speak to the maintenance side with the work.
Yeah, the maintenance guys that, you know, haven't been plowing much snow, so they've been painting and washing walls and fixing up the sides of buildings, maintenance shops. The bridge crew, they're out working underneath the bridges, replacing some broken piling, or not piling, stringers and breaking. And in the office, kind of working on pricing for equipment and for the new facility.
Then on the construction side, I'm just working on plans in 2024. There's paving for L thirty-two, A twenty-two, A thirty, and A thirty-four. And then there's a couple of bridge projects we're also working on, trying to utilize those federal bridge funds, so.
Kevin?
Business as usual. I just filed my 2021 stats. I thought it's here yet. I was going to share with public safety, but I'll share it with everybody if you want to. Nine-one-one calls for the year were one thousand eight hundred thirty-eight. Calls for service were five thousand two hundred fifty-two, seven hundred thirty-three citations issued, one thousand one hundred four warnings, three hundred fifty-five arrests, ninety-one accidents, three hundred twenty-five papers served, forty-eight domestic calls, and one hundred twelve welfare checks.
What you doing in your spare time?
I have, you would like to be busy.
I'll ask Deb. I'm gonna make Craig, I'm gonna make Craig be last. Otherwise, he doesn't pay attention.
Yep.
Well, we're just renewing ATVs in snow yet, and of course, now it won't renew constantly. We've been doing a lot of those, and we're now trying, so we're busy.
Well, last Saturday, we had our annual Trump Fest event, and it was a nice day. But it turned out to be a nice day. It was pretty darn cold in the morning when we were getting things set up, I will tell you. But we had an awesome turnout. We ended up giving away, I think, forty-eight kids' poles, and then we had a total attendance, we're estimating somewhere around a hundred seventy-five, which is not quite a record, but it's better than we did last year, and it's, I mean, it's a lot of people. I brought pictures, just say John was out with his camera, one of my board members taking pictures, so I figured I'd bring those to share. But all in all, we had a lot of support from the community, as far as like the prizes we gave away and other donations. And people came from as far away as Fayetteville, Arkansas, I believe, on the registration sheet.
You made a special trip.
I believe so, yeah. That's my story. But no, Fayetteville, Arkansas, I think he probably was related to somebody, but we had a lot of non-county people there, so Sulu, Lyon, Minnesota, so it was a, it was a really good day. I think everybody's happy it's over though. It's a lot of work to get her, to get her set up and then cleaned up afterwards.
Okay, Steph?
So last week, we had a joint Zoom with Extension Office with Civil Action and Housing Assessment Process. So right now, just working with each city to get the committee to make sure there's representation from lots of different sectors. And there's, it's gonna start hopefully, hopefully within the next couple of weeks with an educational session first. Then it's gonna be a community survey that we're gonna be really hoping to get very good participation from people in those three communities, followed by some strategic planning processes. So just being as helpful as I can to keep all of moving along. We are gonna be having Career Day again, Civil Action, in April. We did not have it the last two years, so just kind of working on some early planning for that and hoping to have opportunities for businesses to have a booth at the school as well, so that businesses that maybe can't host tours and things, we can involve them this year. So just lots of planning going on for other things right now. That's it?
I don't have any. Coke operation.
Andrew?
Um, I know Rochelle's been working with you guys on the budget stuff and going through some of that, and I, the rest of us have kind of been working on redistricting. We got our approvals from LSA and all that kind of stuff, so we have to get all of that included there. So I think when the, we did a conference call with the state last week, and they had announced that there were still seventy-eight of the ninety-nine counties that still had to finish their, their stuff because they were waiting on cities to report back. So I thought that was interesting, but, um, so once, we, we did get our smack in at the proof, then we have to go through and do the updating of everything in our board here now, so we're also training.
Okay, Craig.
Hi, Rochelle. I called, I talked to folks last week to see about the native life, and there are twelve guys on the list of all the native life. I've got Julie left to call, about two or three ago, who didn't get vaccinated, so they're looking at some of them, health concerns. I think there's, I don't look to the Florida daughter, but they could last much longer if they try not to be, you know. And then the next week, I'm gonna go to Arizona, work on our satellite office down there. I wish we luck.
Sounds like Arizona. Sounds like the Georgia.
Poor guy.
Does the board have any questions, or does anybody have questions for the board?
I was just going to tell his office stuff down there.
The computers and everything.
Sorry, I got a call.
No question, other questions? I don't know who wrapped the trips today. Okay, well, thank you guys very much. See, help is up.
I'll make this really short and sweet. Just for your information, it is time to dig up the time capsule this year. It's buried on the, whatever side that courthouse side. So it's buried in nineteen seventy-two. You know, the kickoff for the Hundred Fiftieth event is May first, which is a Sunday. Talked to Mike the other day about, you know, could be engineering guys' help, and obviously not really on the Sunday, so we probably just organized for it to be dug up ahead of time. I'm just letting you know that it's the time for that. I don't know at this stage, we don't know how far down it is, or how big it is, or anything like that. Been hard to find anybody that does know that, but I don't know how long, you know, until we re-bury the time capsule and what that looks like. So I'm just kind of letting you know that I've agreed to kind of help with that, P.
We're gonna dig pot holes in the courtyard looking for it.
Yes, basically.
There's not a good map.
There is no map. It's been, I know I called Arlene Keel, and she said there was some stuff in the recorder's office, but it was historical information about the county and the city, not about the actual celebrations, the Hundred, for the Hundred. So, you know, hopefully, I mean, it is not under the rock, at least the, the plate on the rocks is buried as far as it, so that was smart, because who wants to move that? So I guess if there's any comments or questions or thoughts or anything about it, I just wanted to let you know that I agree to, to kind of help manage that. And I think we're gonna work with, you know, the school and the community to try to get ideas of what's being put back in there, but I don't really have a lot more information to let you know that we'll do it with our professional. Mike was agreeable to help, so if there's...
Is there any information on who was on that committee and...
I told Beth all that information. I mean, I talked to her about it. She said she didn't...
Oh, I thought she said she had a list of...
Do the papers have any district?
Yes, she did. She does, no.
Yeah, so, which is a good, but it's more of just like, you know, at the end of the day, we have to dig it up, so it's really just replacing what's in there and is the box that is there gonna be intact, or, you know, those kind of things. But I couldn't find any records within the courthouse, and Beth, I told Beth I would be happy to kind of help, so she would...
So this was the designated time it was supposed to be dug up?
Oh, I mean, it says on there, future celebrations, it's when it'll be dug up. I'm sure they didn't.
Did they mean the, the Two Hundred for the one that... It's fifty years old, so they're...
Well...
We want to see what's in there, but we won't see the letter.
So that's it, just letting you know. If there's concerns, let me know.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
We have time to discuss this case. HSA savings kind of do this. About five minutes.
You guys, tell me, Esther?
This is walking in a five-minute conversation.
You let me out of that conversation, maybe.
Yeah, we better hold off on that.
Can we skip over? Set public hearing date for redistricting? Redistricting, the county supervisor districts?
Both of those are shell slots.
Um, she has noted here, December twenty-second at eight fifty is what she was shooting for, if that makes sense. Okay, if you guys have a regular meeting day.
Sounds good.
You have a motion for that?
Is that motionally right?
Yeah.
Second, support, have motion and support. No votes in favor?
Hey.
Right?
Right?
opposed? Motion here. Now, I don't believe, I'm sorry, repeat, let's get again. Are you ready? Set public hearing date for provocation, property, is she got something for that?
Yeah, I do have some notes on that as well. She said there's a couple options. You can do March first, but then the public hearing would be March twenty-second, which falls on a normal budget, or a normal board day. Or if you did the eighth, that one is your, and then the public hearing would have to be the twenty-ninth. So it looks like one of the others.
Either way, you're getting...
Yeah, you don't have that much to make hearing.
Whatever he has wishes, he'll give you your statement.
She indicated we're wanting to change that rural supplemental levy even further than she did, to make those adjustments, it would probably need to wait till next Friday to get submitted throughout the office. And you might be pushing it to get to the papers by Friday to do that first and twenty-second. Additionally, I mean, in the HSA thing, Ryan, your benefits partners has indicated he'd be available fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. So would you consider having a meeting next Wednesday after the conference board meeting? If we received a recommendation from him on the HSA thing, we reached out to my speaking, that was his response.
Well, I can be available next week. First, would you? It would be preferable to get public hearings set.
So the eighth and the twenty-ninth, or...
Is it the eighth and the twenty-ninth, or the first and the twenty-second?
Was that a motion?
Yeah.
Have a motion?
Support.
Have you support? Any votes in favor?
I...
opposed? Motion here.
For the eighth and the twenty-ninth, right?
Yeah.
It's the ninth, fourteenth, so...
Yeah, we're close enough with boy, is that insurance review? I'm not ready yet, it's not nine fifteen. Well, okay, let everybody have a cup of coffee and go, go to the bathroom.
Tom's ready.
Tom's ready, okay. Okay, thanks for the time to, to just meet, there was just a briefing on your workers' comp. That's, that's all I'm here to talk about. Uh, the good news is, most of the rates went down. Jay, do you wanna pass those or not? Check it out. Over here. The left side chose, about twenty-one, the right side chose the twenty-two. The only rate that went up were, were the streets and roads just a minute ago. Oh, I'm sorry. Kind of your traffic shuffle now, I think. Got an extra one, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, just the streets and roads, it went up from four dollars and thirty-eight, tested four forty-two, and the police officer. I, I really expected that to be going up, and it's not. It went from three, point three ninety-three, point four, so. Uh, just as an example, this is what we can kind of project, is what the premiums will be this next year. Last year was sixty-one thousand three seventy-one. This year, we're projecting fifty-eight thousand four forty-six, which is, which is a good thing, because it wasn't that many years ago, we were over a hundred thousand for workers' comp, so the...
The street and roads, that reflects the incident in the road?
Uh, you know, uh, not really, Jay. What it, what it reflects is what's happening throughout the whole industry. I mean, they don't just pick OCL account. Of course, that incident didn't, didn't help, but that just adds into the industry's records of, of having incident. You know, and if I could touch on that just a little bit, I, and I don't know how to do it. All, just, just remember this, all medical claims on the work comp don't cross, don't, don't work against you at all, okay? It's only when you have time, time off claims, where somebody's reimbursed for having time off, those are what, what hurts your loss ratio. So just, and I don't know how to do that. I don't know what, but to talk to your department heads, if someone is injured, if you have something else for them to do, even though they're injured, they may not be able to perform their exact duties, but just have them show up and do some menial stuff, that might be a lot cheaper for you in the long run rather than paying those, paying those losses, but, or having workers' comp pay that. Another one I'd like to touch on...
Have they reviewed, or we have a return to work following the year, light duty type approach.
Right.
Is that reviewed, or is there a combination?
I don't know.
For our workman's comp, you know, we have light duty for somebody that was injured on the job, but if they are injured elsewhere, not on the job, we do not have light duty for them. With them, with that, with that company.
Right, that doesn't touch your workers' comp, that's just, to align with that. Um, just, it's one other thing just to touch on, when, you know, you guys have a safety committee, and you meet, I think it was about once a month, or once every two months, or something like that, I can't remember.
Right, do you want to add a brief?
Right, so then, uh, since you get those established, I mean, it's just hard records that show that people have, that haven't really been safety committed, their losses are gone. And I think Nick is on it, Nate Crowe, Sandy Smith, I think Jamie was on it. Remember who else was on the safety committee?
I think that was about it.
I think that's about it. And all they do is they review what's going on in the workplace, and the dangers that they see, and then they, they try to address it, and let you guys know if there's anything going on, anything like that. They have not met since, I think, March of twenty because of COVID. Now, um, we're there to help start, get the safety committee going. That's not my job to, if I'm not on the safety committee, I'll, I helped get it going, but I don't know, uh, position that you'd like to take to spark it, to get going again.
Does the company have any ideas on stuff, stuff to go over every month?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Scott Smith, uh, he, he's the loss control guy. He's actually gonna be stepping off, we're getting a new guy by the name of Bill Dink from Hemmingsburg. They're coming up Thursday morning to meet with Rochelle, Mike, and Nick. They'd like to meet with them and just talk to them, as new loss control person, and we're going to City of Sibley in the afternoon, but, uh, did definitely have some ideas. But I thought, was, correct me if I'm wrong, we were, it was Sandy the chair?
Yes.
Yeah. So I don't know if the, if the pressure needs to go there to get it started up again, or, and it doesn't have to last long. The thing is that, uh, Scott said, he said, sometimes the meetings don't even last fifteen minutes. Sometimes they last forty-five minutes, but most time, he said, they're less than a half hour. But it's just bouncing things off, what, what's going on, what things that they, like, just as an example, Nick might come here and he might see some kind of hazard out here, or somebody might see something that, you know, is just, you just share and try to avoid, avoid losses, and then there's just communication within the departments. And I guess it makes a heck of a difference. William, any, any, from a perspective from a different county, you know, they have a...
We, we have a safety meeting that meets, obviously, a monthly. This involves emergency management, um, you know, something, um, and then we've got a couple guys from secondary roads on that committee, admitting they go over, you know, what safety, um, maybe there's some new safety measures that can be implemented, you know, what do we gotta take a look at that maybe causes some safety issues, because I think the more incidents you have, you know, your, your rates are gonna go up, so we're trying to keep that down and look at that. And I think one of the board members is on the safety committee too, I think it was Art Amrick, I'm not sure if he's on this year too.
No, I, um, this last fall, when we had the tractor, it's Mike had called me, and I went out there, it scared the hell out of me. When I saw what had happened, I think back, he flew out of the cabin. I honestly, I was talking to her, are you sure he's okay? Because that's all I care about. The rest is plastic and metal, who cares? I mean, you can get that taken care of, that's not, shouldn't be that big issue, but when people get hurt, you want them to go home safe. And, uh, so anyway, that, those are the things that kind of, kind of concern me as, as far as an agent, because I'm a special account. And we've come a long ways, just think when we first started, we had your payment of over a hundred thousand premium, now we're down to like fifty-eight thousand, and that's a significant amount of money that we could really save, so.
Not only is it a good idea, Bill, but is there any advantage to having a monthly as far as financially? I mean, do we get any better credits or anything?
You know, to have a monthly safety meeting, I, I know all the big co-ops and stuff around here.
Sure. I would say there's really, uh, the savings comes by the...
The loss, the loss.
So in the secondary roads, we do have a monthly safety meeting, and, and we have a yearly itinerary, what we go over, and, and our insurance company's part of that, you know. Yeah, like, well, every month, we, Tom or I go to the secondary roads, and we put on some kind of a safety meeting for them. Like today, we go into the common conservation, you know, bringing them pizza, and we go through some safety meetings, and it's just memory refreshed. That's, that's what it is, just to, you know, we don't have to do that, but we wanna do that, because, you know, because we're part of the community, so.
You show up at their meetings with pizza?
I do, I do. Put your other athletic gear on. You know, you're gonna have to fit your chairs.
So, uh, that's about all I have. I just wanted to give you a brief update. Everything seems to be going really well. We don't see really large increases coming as far as property. I thought it was gonna be quite a bit more. I told Rochelle, just plug in ten percent, because I'm not aware. Look what's going on with used cars now, they're up thirty-seven percent from where they were. Who can figure, figure that stuff, so. This, this COVID thing along with work shortages and everything has created inflation, that who could figure that, so. Any other questions for me? Yeah, thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you for not sleeping. Thanks for coming.
You bet.
Thank you, guys. I will. Does he train you, Tom?
He's trying. Well, learn.
Yes, that is...
Well, age too.
All right. I just want to go back to the HSA savings.
I think having that meeting with Ryan next week would, would be helpful, and Rochelle didn't like the short turnaround, get something changed there, to have it to the papers by that Friday either, because he said it is possible. I guess my thought on it was, I like sticking with the two years, the first two years of the levels we've identified, exposure to the individuals that choose that, it's the same as if they stay on the other plan. But Ryan has said in the past, and I think it's probably a plenty high contribution level in comparison to what's usually funded by an employer towards a savings account. I think after two years, we could look at reducing that. I haven't crunched the numbers, and I want to know that we were on board with it before I bought it, trying to do that work, but my thought is, we've limited that exposure to be the same the first two years, regardless of the plan. They're seeing premium, lower premiums with the HSA plan than with the other one, so I think we could factor the premium difference and assume or say that that allows them to make individual contributions towards their own savings account, and figure out what the county's contribution would be if that were being done. It doesn't require them to, but the net cost to the employee would be the same on either plan, just in premiums or inputting it into their own account, and then the county's contribution would fall in line with that approach. I haven't figured out how exactly, so I'll get, but that's where my guess is going on that. I think we're, I would guess, we have an audit comment if we don't take action of some sort, because our previous members identified two years of contributions. On January, any contributions would be outside that, so I think we need to authorize something, even if it's the same, which I'm not, I'm pretty used to do, but what we figured out to be, needs to be authorized.
So you're saying we'll wait till we talk with... What's your guys' name again?
Personally, I think the plans we're offering, we're, it's our job to figure out where we wanna be and farm out to, to prevent the partners, but if, if we're, if you'd like a recommendation, then, yeah, one we can hear what you have to say.
What's this on? I'd like to hear what you've got to say. So, so that's it, then? Any other comments or discussion? Wait, did you get one? What's that?
I did reach out to him, and I didn't forward emails to everyone, because I think that would be the meeting, so I'll share it here, if you don't mind.
Oh, that's good.
I think on a bigger picture, I would recommend annually that... I think on a bigger picture, I would recommend annually that prior to budgeting, starting in mid-one, the HRA participant rates would reflect the exact total of the upcoming year's single and family premiums and the single and family contributions to the savings with the county. So that we're budgeting properly according to what the next year would show. Secondly, union rates will continue to reflect only what is agreed upon at bargaining table. So that changes through negotiations. It's kind of the approach we've been taking. Thirdly, annually, should identify how many are in the HRA plan and what that creates the total annual exposure. And what we want our reserves to be, and if the limit reserves are short of that, we factor that into the rates. And then, fourthly, annually, creating the HRA rate based on the actual plan rate and previous year's exposure. So to make very up and down a little bit, kind of a year in arrears, but we have the previously generated funding to... He responded that he would probably have something on all those points when he was able to come. I was hoping he would provide something by email to that. But so hopefully we'll have that next week, that's just kind of what I shot off to him.
Tell you what, I'm starting to ask you any questions. We'll discuss this on...
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Are we following the other meeting?
Yeah.
What time's the other meeting?
Eight twenty-five.
I don't think there's anything.
I think there is anything. I never got the information. Okay. You guys wanna just skip down a bit over there, we'll get these guys coming our way. And we'll consider the purchase of replacement tractor, guys.
Yeah, I think Mike has got a kind of a standard sheet for everybody. And the insurance payouts are a little different. And I think if you wanna, remember a little bit about that, what that is. And I think he admitted to earlier that equipment prices have gone through the roof. And so you're gonna have to take a look at your current equipment evaluation to make sure everything insured adequately quickly. You don't wanna over insure because they never collect that, so then they're buying, paying for additional insurance if they don't ever utilize. And I think if you wanna talk to why the difference amounts.
Sure. Okay, when, when we meet with Mike or Sarah, anyone downstairs about their equipment list and evaluations of the equipment list, like just as an example, we, when they bought the tractor, the tractor we're talking about. That was the purchase price. They called me up, said we need to add that to the policy. So I put the purchase price on there and put it on there, so that's, that's the value. So as we looked at those, you know, as we get those values, who would've known that we have this equation right now? It's just the way that it's going. But within the policy, and I brought copies of that too.
So you put the purchase price in, I agree, the replacement, of your replacement costs.
Yeah, up, up to that limit. And see on this, on these policies, Jamie, there's a clause in there that would raise it up to a hundred and twenty percent of what you actually have as replacement. I personally don't know of any other companies, like DNC companies, or any that do that with regular businesses that have that endorsement. So like, we have that set up at replacement cost up to the, up to the limit of insurance that we have. And the reason that they put that replacement cost in there is a lot of times it's a partial loss. It's not a total loss. So like, just say, you could've got the thing fixed with forty-five thousand, then paid the forty-five thousand fix it and get it replaced. And now it's, it's a total loss. And now there's a, there's a guard in there, see, you see in that bottom right where I highlighted that? It just talks about that hundred and twenty percent. So we can pay up to, if I remember right, like, is it like a hundred and thirteen thousand?
Yeah, that's what you're gonna go.
Hundred and thirteen, one fifty.
Yeah, hundred and thirteen thousand, one fifty, to go toward replacement. Well, with the changes of the inflation, it's, it's almost doubled. It's, it's ridiculous. I, I don't know, I don't know how to do that, because I don't want you paying the hundred premium that you actually have telling. But I wanted to ensure it's replaced, at least for partial stuff, but I can't. How do I expect the county to pay for replacement cost on, for a hundred and fifty thousand, what may only cost blankie to replace? You know, I, I can't, like, how do we do that?
But as soon as you buy.
Go ahead, Andrew. No, go ahead.
You buy at this elevated price now, that's what you're gonna put on the policy.
Yes.
The premiums are gonna determine from going forward.
Yes, so, yeah, so like, just, just as an example.
Play catch up somewhat.
Right, so let's just say as an example, you buy this at a hundred and fifty thousand, okay? As an example, I'll put it in as a hundred and fifty, and that clause is still there up to one point two. Then, then would that tractor come off and then this would come back on, and that's where you would free adjust it from there. Another one I, I wasn't aware of, that, you know, the government discounts, right?
Concessions on...
Concessions on, on new. On new stuff?
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that. Giving those, because when I've heard from some of the vendors, we think equipment is so tight that they're not necessarily giving those.
Four hundred and fifty. Oh, they're not giving them anywhere else.
But we'd have to pay, like, for trucks, a surcharge that trucks are already ordered and approved.
Sure.
Because they can't get, the factories can't get raw materials.
Right.
So they're actually increasing the pricing on trucks that are already agreed on. So, yeah, there is no, I mean, these days, there is no government discounts, things like so.
Yeah, it's, I, I don't have an answer. I know there's, I know there's communities that are ordering fire trucks, it's gonna be a year before they get to fire trucks. So why, why is there a difference in this thing on what the insurance will pay for tractors? The tractors, it's eighty-nine five, and then down here it's twenty thirteen. Okay, I see what you're saying. Eighty-nine five is an actual cash value settlement. Okay.
But down here it says one thirteen, one sixty, am I looking that wrong?
No. I've never seen such a thing in my life, yeah. Right. Mike got cheated or something. If, if you decide to, just say if, what difference is to make, what kind of tractor you buy on the insurance? If you, if you go up or equal to, they'll pay that hundred and thirteen. If you go down in size, then they'll pay the actual cash value. I've never heard of such a thing. Yeah. I, that's, that's just the way that they actually work. This isn't, this isn't an exception, this is the rule of how they handle it. You know, like, I was explaining to Mike yesterday when we were discussing it, that same tractor, the actual cash value may be ninety thousand. But when, like, just say at the C and B, they might have a, they might have bought it for ninety, but they're not gonna sell it for ninety. They're gonna sell it for a hundred and ten, or a hundred and thirteen. So the actual cash value was down to what the wholesale part of it is.
That's the way I was explaining, so it was cash value is what the tractors were to, or like, C and B purchased it, not what they're gonna make off of it.
Right.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. That's still, yeah, that's a, that's an actual cash value. So like, if you didn't wanna replace it, they'll pay the actual cash value of the tractor. I just retired last year and I never, never anticipated, lost everything, I never... I can buy whatever I want. The value of the tractor should be X number of dollars. Exactly, I, I know, I know what you're saying, but... Whatever you had your, your tractors insured for, the actual cash value might've been enough so you could go out and do that. It's just that the market has changed now, so everyone's... But I got, I got increased value too. Yeah, thousand dollar tractor, when I bought it, it was, it was worth fifteen thousand, so they gave me the fifteen thousand. Sure, and that's on blanket. You, you would have the, the difference on a blanket policy? This is not on a blanket policy, this is any scheduled policy. It's not like a farm blanket, I can't, you can't do that in a, this alley or, you can do that on a farm blanket, but...
So the cash value, am I understanding this right, Mike? That if we hadn't had the accident, we decided, all right, insurance company, what we buy this tractor from us for? That's what they'd offer us, eighty-nine five.
Yeah.
And working conditions prior to it. Regardless of the fact that to actually buy it then, it was elevated.
That's the way I, I, yeah.
And the market carried home more.
It's like a fluctuating price on that, you know, so how do you, you know, I know they base it off of what our purchase price was. You know, so maybe individually, we have to go through our entire fleet and put a new value on things, you know, because of the way inflated prices are going, you know? But then at that token, then too, it's, you know, a larger premium.
And then the other side of that is, you know, you over insure, they're not gonna pay you beyond what it's worth. So are you buying, paying for additional insurance premium that you don't utilize?
So I, I did make the suggestion last week when I went down and talked to them. You know, let's maybe look at what it would cost you to increase all, all of it by twenty-five percent. You know, I, it's just a, just a thought, because like, right now, a lot of stuff is thirty to somebody's forty percent more. But we don't wanna over insure, and I don't wanna over, and I don't wanna under insure either. It's a, it's a difficult market.
But come for a share.
But if we increase the insurance and then they go back to actual cash value, are we even gonna get that stated amount?
Well, if you increase the amount. Right, but if you go to replace, if you go to replacement, then you're, you're gonna get that plus another one twenty, if it costs.
But as I read this email, it said, we listed it at ninety-four three, you pay us out eighty-nine five.
On a cash value.
It's gonna cost a hundred and twenty-five to replace it.
But if they're...
So if we increase about twenty-five percent, but we don't even get the stated amount.
Their original, their original, they were gonna pay us that ninety-four thousand R. But then when I was talking to them, then they bumped it up to a hundred and thirteen thousand.
If we replace.
Yeah, if we replace them like in time.
So, so I think Mike did a good job putting together all of the, I guess, the options for the tractor replacements. You know, you could get for insurance if you buy the sixty-one seventy R. And if you wanna buy the sixty-one fifty-five M, then that's what the insurance payouts will be, so. I think it's up for discussion. And then there is the option, there is a get option that can lead to...
Yes. I think you put three hundred dollars on a year on those tractors.
So I guess different options are there for discussion, because there's obviously some different payout for insurance, tractors, different models are different prices, so.
I'm curious why we aren't getting a hundred and thirteen, that's six on the sixty-one fifty-five, is what we are on the sixty-one seventy.
We had, see, that's what that clause is, part of that, what he handed out to you. That's replacement like in time. We had a sixty-one seventy R, and I was gonna replace it with a smaller tractor. The R is more of a Cadillac, and the M is a muster value tractor. It's like an XLT and a Lariat, if you're working in a GNC and Chevy.
So like, and that's what they're saying, is if you go up in value or equal to, they'll pay that one twenty.
So that's what I guess the payout is different on the sixty-one fifty-five M, so.
I guess it's crazy not to go up for less money. I don't know about that.
It's not gonna cost you more to go up.
The sixty-one seventy R is definitely more money than the sixty-one fifty-five M, so, and like, but you're getting less insurance money, so... You know, that's, that's why all the options are, I told him, I put them all on option, and then we're gonna look at all of them and discuss them.
I'd say go with the new one, I'm not used to. So sixty-one seventy, twelve hundred and sixty hours. I'd rather go new with zero hours.
And our tractor did have twenty-two hundred hours. And I threw them rentals in there, you know, that's a government rental rate from C and B. You know, not everybody can go rent for two dollars an hour, you know? But you look at the limitations on the hours, and then it's all broke out there. And like William said, last year, we put two hundred and forty-five hours on that tractor, and it was a shorter season. And then the year before, we put up three hundred and sixty-seven hours. So, you know, that's just kind of a little...
What's our deductible on that?
Five hundred.
And that's why...
Eight hundred?
Yeah, that's why they're paying eighty-nine five instead of ninety thousand.
I must really be looking at this wrong, because it said their value is ninety-four thousand, three hundred dollars, and they're gonna pay us ninety, eighty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. What if I miss the cash value? Is, is, is the cash value versus the replacement?
When, when, quote me if I'm wrong, or, correct me if I'm wrong, when they came down and they assessed the damage to the tractor, that guy said the cash value of the tractor was a ninety thousand dollar tractor, the adjuster. That's where the cash value comes from.
If it wasn't wrecked?
Yes.
I don't agree with that at all. I would insist on it. That tractor's worth more than that. It's my opinion. He's quick to hurry up and issue a chapter eighty-nine five. Anytime an insurance person is quick to issue a chapter, I, I would self-check it. That's just my opinion, maybe you guys disagree with me. Bill, what are your thoughts? You think I'm way out of line on that or not?
I understand what you're, you're saying, but we're, we're talking about replacement value, and we're talking about a cash value.
I'm just talking about what that tractor's worth.
Right.
Non-wrecked, it's worth more than eighty-nine five. According to what... That was his estimate, but I think his estimate's wrong. So that's my opinion.
Is there any, a different investor?
I was gonna say you could probably ask for another opinion. I don't know why you couldn't do that.
It was a process for that, didn't it?
Yeah, just, maybe somebody at C and B can give you an idea what that tractor's worth. You know, they, they should know, we're in the business.
So you, you know, if you wanna know that, I'll probably get another valuation on it, just table this and see if we can get another valuation and take a different investor.
And then, and bring it back to God.
So do you hire and then...
Table and get another opinion on it, because it is worth more than that. If you pay attention to what a farm equipment's for right now, you couldn't buy that tractor for ninety thousand bucks. Not even close. So to say that's the cash value, even on auction prices, it's not even close.
So then I would say table it and then try to get a, a different investor to look at that, give it a, make a valuation. Is there, do we get something from C and B and then submit the insurance?
You certainly could.
I have had emails through their store manager about costs of tractors, and I think I forwarded that on to you too. I do have that.
On the John?
Yeah.
What other, what other...
I would have to go look it up, page the numbers.
That might be right on, but I think it's off, so I would like to see a different.
And if, if you're leaning towards the new, and the other thing too is, you know, equipment is, is so volatile right now. And you might have to go back and get new quotes for different tractors to get, I don't know, you know, which ones of those might be available. You know, trying to get another adjuster, but we could certainly do that, but I do, that's, if we're gonna table it, we'll get another adjuster and see if it changes the...
Aren't you actually talking, why the difference in tractor, pal?
Well, you're going down in value.
Between the sixty-one fifty-five and the sixty-one seventy, that's, that's quite a different tractor. Isn't it, Tom, don't you think too?
Well, I don't, I don't know those numbers that well, but if it's, it's a...
R series?
R series is just more options, you know, but the one seventy, sixty-one seventy is a hundred and seventy horse. And the sixty-one fifty-five is a hundred and fifty-five horse.
But isn't the R series a whole frame tractor, and the M series is not a whole frame?
Yeah, like with manual hydraulics and...
So you're probably not really talking about the staff, so, I mean, I know, I agree, buy new, but you're talking... So you're probably not really talking about the staff, so, I mean, I know, I agree, buy new, but you're talking about.
But you're never gonna get, you might be waiting here for that tractor, so if you needed that tractor.
No, I'm not thinking we should do it, but we're just talking a lot of tractors.
I'm just saying, do we need that big tractor?
I don't know.
See, like, for that tractor, I, I, for the, the sixty-one seventy was a little bit vague for us. I went to a sixty-one fifty-five because when we pull them road groomers in the spring and stuff, we've got those, so I'm using it for mowing, which is a little large for mowing, but then you need that for when you do the road groomers in the spring, so that's our happy medium for versatile tractor size. They don't offer that in our series, like sixty-one fifty-five? I, they may, but I didn't even look at that, I didn't even look.
They can just go to the sixty-one fifty-five R, they're still gonna see it as a smaller tractor, so they're still not gonna.
Right, yeah.
I appreciate your effort, Mike, I just, I don't think we would.
So are we gonna have to wreck something, Mike, in the meantime?
Probably, if we don't have a tractor.
Because even if you did it now, you won't have one.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's why I did.
Unless you gotta use one.
Yeah.
Then you would have one.
Well, the sixty-one fifty-five that they have there, that one is on order, he does not have our name on it, cause he will not hold it, but he says it's still in the pipeline, and it, and it'll be here, I think he said, this month, and so then it will be on the lot. So that new one is available to us today, but it might not be tomorrow. And I do have this email here that I did get from, uh, C and B about, uh, assessing the values of the tractors, you know, um, I don't have copies, I wasn't sure how far a depth we were gonna get, but then I've got a price tier of other tractors similar to what we had, you know, um. I, I can pass this around, or actually make copies, or. That is for the new one, excuse me, what you got there? Yep, that, that's for the new one, they have that, but those are for like the pricing from C and B, tractors they follow, and, uh, the email from manager. And it's a lot to absorb, just sitting right there, I mean.
Do you read that email on the top page right there, or not?
In my statement, this one, but it, our cost of sixty-one seventy, out of pocket would be forty-five, eight forty, our cost of sixty-one fifty-five would be forty-nine, a thousand out of pocket, thirty-one sixty difference. For twenty-two hundred hours, that's two fifty an hour, right? Did you hear that, Ray? If we want new and we're not wanting the hours, we're paying two fifty an hour.
Hey, you wanna say that again, then?
If the cost difference is thirty-one sixty, three thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, our out-of-pocket cost, not just unit cost. We've got twenty, twelve sixty hours, one thousand one hundred and sixty hours, but three thousand one hundred and sixty dollars more our cost. A unit that doesn't have twelve sixty hours, you're kind of dividing that twelve sixty hours into the price, we're paying two fifty per hour.
Of course you do, we should.
Just on hours, if it doesn't have a loader.
Right.
And the other one does.
Yep, and we don't need a loader.
And what's, what's the warranty or what?
There's different values, you can go, I mean, you can do a five-year, um, term, or you can do a three-year term, there's, there are different ones. If you look at that handout on the new sixty-one fifty-five, it does say on there what the warranty is, I do believe.
The way I get that, Mike, you know, I have pretty, pretty good of a figure.
Yeah, go ahead.
That one ten is what they've been out for a price on that sixty.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what we took.
Yeah. Yeah, so like that power guard protection plan, thirty-five hundred dollars they had on there. Two thousand hours, seventy months.
Do you think that tractor's gonna be?
Should be here, we're sorry. So do you have another, you do have another meeting on the twenty-second?
That's what it's called, February.
If you did want, um, time to.
Every day.
Over all these options. You could, you know, you could table it to the twenty-second, I still be going for the new ones, if I still have time, you know, maybe we can get another adjuster.
Their policy covers their rental?
I have, I have a check.
Uh, I think we should be able to get what it's worth, not, that's a real old law, versus like, don't everyone wreck a car, the person they give you is the lowest thing they can find. And that's just not what the market is right now, and it wasn't when I got around.
Do you send that to John? Do you send those prices to John?
Everything I get.
Okay.
And I go, I've been dealing with John, and these last ones, they were offered the ninety-four five, or ninety-four thousand five hundred. It went to his boss, and that's when they came back with a hundred and thirteen thousand one sixty for a settlement for the second one, and then I says, I'm about, and my, end of my, uh, negotiating, because it gets above my head, if you're gonna go in further, I mean, I can still keep asking questions and, and stuff, and, but.
So pay the one thirteen for like, but then if you go down to a lesser model, they don't want you making any money off that thing, so then they drop the cash value down to eighty-nine-five. But if it's totaled, it's worth what it's worth, it shouldn't matter what you spent the money on, you should just get a check on the tractor.
And I do know, like, uh, I wish I had them, I think I do have them numbers here, the accident report here, when they went to, uh, price out, to total it out, they have this here, um, eighty-eight thousand, I believe it is, for estimated parts to replace and fix, and that's not knowing if anything else is, is wrecked on it, so, and they already found it out, so.
Did they fix the tractor, right?
Yeah, yeah, cause I told them I'd dip on.
Sure.
Just dip on it.
Well, since we're not fixing it, total bill, why aren't they just cutting us a check for the, the value of the truck?
Yeah.
Well, I, and that's, you know, I, I don't get involved in that part, I, I mean, I will now, cause you know, it's turned into kind of a questionable thing, so, I'll ask them. And I think the cash in that they're offering is eighty-nine-five.
Right, unless, you know, you, you buy this other one here, then, then it's one thirteen, but if it's totaled, it's totaled. So I should just get a check for the cash value of that tractor, which is not eighty-nine, but if I buy the like, it shouldn't matter what I bought. It should just be, you're gonna cut me a check for my total loss, and my total loss is one-ten or one-thirteen, so why, why should it matter what I replaced it with? Cause it should have no bearing on the value of that tractor, what we replaced it with. We had it insured for that much month.
I'm just thinking if I do.
Well, you had it insured for ninety-three. The one-twenty comes if you replace it with liking kind.
But if you total it out.
That's where the replacement cost is, to replace it with liking kind.
Well, then, then it should be one-twenty.
Oh, we had it insured for ninety-three?
Ninety-three something.
Ninety-three four or something?
Ninety-four three.
Okay. Well, if nothing else, they're all five thousand dollars. So whatever, we're saying, hey, four, three, eighty-nine-five, if, if, if nothing else, they're all five thousand dollars. Um, I just want, should I try to call John and at least get him on the phone here to talk to him? Rather than. I'd almost say talk to him and see if he can get something worked out ahead of time.
Okay.
Guess the moral of the story is don't wreck anymore quick.
At, at least you can tell him what we're saying, what we think.
I, I don't think they're offering us a fair price value.
Okay, well, that sheet that Mike just handed out to, kinda C and B said one-ten, well, that's twenty thousand dollars off. Where is that, is that?
Twenty thousand dollars.
The value, or is that what they would sell it for, I, you know, I don't.
Just a bill of that.
Well, there's anywhere from, um, one hundred and fifty thousand on a tractor like that to ninety-three something, so. But we also have three members we had to check for. Volcano, we're still on five thousand dollars.
Yeah, but we're still signed on the document, how they're gonna treat us, I don't know what it's worth.
Is this too many? They have to, what's what we're doing?
So you table it till the twenty-second, see if you wanna talk to Mike and see.
I think the motion to table is still the twenty-second.
We have a motion for support, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, so in the meantime, I'll, I'll be talking with the adjusters and see what's going on.
Okay. And just tell them we got a, we got a twenty-second, February, yeah, so, um, you know, we can come back with.
Sure.
Revision of that.
Okay.
Value.
Okay, well, that's true.
You, you know, part of the box about how they figure replacing, or how they figure out.
The value?
Value.
Like, like an actuary, do you? Did he ever even know any of that, how they figure out the value?
I got.
You have just good luck, boy, you got.
I'm a, I'm a part of the power here.
Oh, power, you know.
Pretty much.
Right.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, let's review approved purchase. What do we have there?
Yeah, Mike, uh.
Thanks, Phil, thank you for.
Thank you, Mike, so let's just, uh, email, okay. And we got that there, we'll go for, yeah, all right, we're moving on. Basically for metal pipe, uh, we got quotes from Northern Iowa Construction and Metal Culverts. Um, Northern Iowa Construction was a little bid at, uh, forty-two thousand, four hundred, eighty-four thousand, and the Metal Culverts is forty-two thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. This would be for various sizes of corrugated metal pipe, and, uh, we've got money in the budget for this year for pipe, and then money in the budget for next year, because some of the, as we get further on, some of the concrete pipe, um, and, uh, some of the, we've got ten-by-five, uh, box culverts, depending on when we can get that from suppliers, and what I'm hearing from the, the pipe companies, Hancock and Semcast both, is that rebar is difficult to get, so, um, so, but like, we got money in the budget for this year, and money in the budget for next year for pipe, so, and some of these, um, if they've got it, we can just get delivery like in June, middle of June, and then they'll send us a bill for after the first of July, so you can pay for it, we can figure that out, pay for it for the next budget cycle, so, um, but anyway, so that's the corrugated metal pipe. Uh, Northern Iowa Construction is the low, uh, I would say the reason why we shouldn't go with them for a little bit.
Is this all the same?
Well, that's corrugated metal pipe.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's.
It says several lines, and one says class forms.
Yeah, no, but what, the first one we're dealing with is the corrugated metal pipe, and they all port the same size of the pipe, so.
I think it was the eighteen inch in there?
Fifteen, eighteen, and twenty-four inch.
Yeah, on the corrugated metal pipe.
And that's just going just like I said, as you do driveway.
Dryways and so forth.
So they've, they've got a good product.
That's what we would. Yeah, these are, you've bought from these two vendors before, yes. So I guess, you know, through the, we'll go through step by step, so if you wanna prove the corrugated metal, the same key prices from Northern Iowa Construction, their little bid.
I'll make the motion for a second. We've got a motion for support. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Carry.
Okay, and then the next one is for, basically this is your concrete round pipe, um, Semcast was low at forty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy cents. Hancock was fifty-six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. And this is, what are the various pipe sizes for the round?
That was just for a little stock on the yard.
Yeah, but the sizes were.
Eighteen inch.
Oh, for the concrete?
Yeah.
Oh, for the eighteen, there was eighteen inch, twenty-four, thirty, and forty-two, and forty-eight.
Okay, so, and they all bid the same, the same sizes, yep, and so, Semcast is low, you bought from Semcast before, so, um, they're out.
Uh, yeah, so.
That's a pretty big difference in price.
Yeah, yeah, um, Hancock, I can just tell you from, like, they even have the, the, just, they got bought out, and no longer Hancock, it's Old Castle. Old Castle's a big corporation, the largest aggregate producer in the world, so, so that created, and they kind of revamped some of their, some of their.
Isn't Hancock doing a bus that way out?
Yeah. So, but anyway, so, Semcast is your low in here, um, I guess.
Any, uh, more questions, or?
Now make a motion to accept a little bit on that.
Support that? Motion for support? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And then the, the last one there is a concrete box culvert, um, for replacement, Mike's got lined up, and, uh, Semcast was the little bid at eighty-eight thousand and ten cents. Um, and Hancock was, or I should say, Old Castle, eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred, uh, twenty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents, so. Semcast is your low, and we did talk to them, it sounded like if we get the order in right away, we might be able to get it by June, June, July, so. I said they're, they gotta get their order in, because they gotta get their steel order in, and they're, they're behind on getting steel, so.
I think we'll accept a little bit on that.
Have a motion? And support, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, update on the engineering position.
Engineer.
Tech.
Yeah, so you, you had one application, um, and that's actually from Brian Waters. Um, he's doing the bridge inspection north of town here, um, Brian helped him through that, and Mike did as well. Um, he's been with, uh, Old Castle for, uh, ten years, over ten years, um, it's like their own department. Uh, he's got interest in going through DNEC as a civil, uh, tech certification, which gives him some auto tab training, um, gives him some road design survey, design classes, and anyway, the program never used to be online, but it's now, except for thirteen days, it's all online, he's expressed interest in, in pursuing that, and as long as the legislature funds it again, the tuition is one dollar, no matter what your income, um, level is, so, and, but there again, the legislature could not, um, might not approve that, uh, moving forward again for another year, uh, and if they don't, then the fee for that would be about, uh, when I talked to DNEC, was four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars for the tuition. Books were about, uh, a thousand bucks, but anyway, that's a fast track program, there's only thirteen days required in a classroom, the rest is online, um, and you get your certification in, uh, one year. So, uh, he's, he's shown his interest in, in attending and going through that program, um, he's doing a good job, uh, from where I can see, you know, he has to sign some pilot reports, uh, you know, eager to learn, uh, he's fortunate to go with the. Uh, he's working with the contractor and, uh, and he works well with Mike and Roger. I guess my recommendation would be is, you know, Roger is six and ten, I'm not sure how long Roger will, will be before he, you know, since I'm retired. Um, get Brian in and then he can start training under Roger. Um, they have a waiting list for this program, if somebody drops out, they will put you to the front of the line. But I suggested to him, if he's interested, to submit his application and, and get on the list, um, for this program. Um, but, uh, I, I would recommend more bringing him in and, and, uh, filling that position with Brian. Uh, that, that's the only opportunity he had, and, uh, you know, and he's got a little bit of CAD experience, um, dealing with his, you know, his, his home business there. Um, and so, I, I think he should have some things in play, so he gets some training before Roger does decide to retire and leave.
Well, will we have to replace him outside then?
Yes, correct, he, he, you know, the goal would be to bring Brian in to the office, get him a, a station set up and, and, I visit with Mike, I think we can put a desk in, in Mike's office with the, with the CAD. You know, we can bring him in right away and so he can start training under Roger. You've got all this asphalt work from twenty twenty-four, there's two bridge projects, and that, that has to be worked on for your HPP funding, um, so you don't lose any of those funds, you can get reallocated. So there is some project work to be, to be, you know, coming up in the future, you know, the next couple of years, so, you know, I think that'd be key to bring him in. He's at a twenty-four ninety-three now, um, I think, uh, Dickinson County hired a, uh, a technician, I think they're being on thirty-two. Um, we've got a technician in Clay County, we've got him up to, I think we've got him up to, uh, we have a two dollar raise this year, it's thirty. So, you know, you could maybe give, uh, Brian a bump to bring him as a tech, but then maybe give him some incentive so that he gets through the program. Um, and maybe give him a little more raise after he's done with the program, but I guess, give him the ability to, you know, you're talking thirteen days, which isn't a lot of time to get through a one-year program. Be flexible with him, and work with him on the thirteen days, um, and, uh, and then if there is, legislature does not continue this dollar scholarship program, you know, I would look at. You just spend a thousand dollars getting two certs from, you know, forty-six, forty, and then a thousand dollars for books, you know, it's, it's not a huge amount when you're trying to get fully certified. And, uh, you'll have some surveying classes and CAD classes, plus off-road design, uh, drainage, uh, there's inspection courses for color inspection, drainage inspection, it's a good program, so.
The thirteen days is that in classroom?
It's in classroom, yeah, that'd be, they told me when I talked to them, they said that would be the, the maximum of days you have to be down there in class, so.
I like that you bring somebody up.
Yeah, and, and, you know, he's, he's got some, a couple certifications, I think, now?
Yep.
And he's doing some bridge inspections, you know, so he's, he's getting, so.
Eggs are, uh, his PC two and his, uh, HMA one classes next month, you know, so.
So I think this would just give him a better knowledge base and then like to bring him in so he can, you know, Roger's got a wealth of knowledge here, you know, he can start sharing that with Brian and training him and then we can get Brian started on some AutoCAD. And Roger knows AutoCAD and he can, you know, help him there, so I, I think, you know, cause if Roger says, hey, I, you know, I've got him off the door, I, you know, it just puts you in a, a, a.
I don't think Brian's going to worry either, so that's the question.
Yeah, yeah, you, you know, he's been with, uh, secondary roads for over ten years, so he, he probably doesn't need, just give him some opportunities. Okay, he's the only one that expressed interest in the little one that applies, so, it's not like we got a lot of other applicants, save your.
You already authorized your position, right? So what, what are you asking us for this salary or what?
Bring him in, you know, just inform him, and then we have to fill Brian's position in the maintenance department, but bring him in as a technician and, uh, then, you know, obviously, you probably want to give him, you know, some bump there, pay for, for assuming that is those new roles. And then give him some incentive in there so that when he does finish completing the program, you know, we've got something to look for, he's striving for, uh, give him a, you know, a monetary, I guess, uh, benefit after completing, so.
You say he's at what, twenty-four something now?
Twenty-four ninety-three now, so.
And you guys are paying thirty, Clay County?
We just, we gave our one technician a, a bump, so he's at thirty. If they can hire at thirty-two, you know, you could give, uh, we should give Brian something, if you give a dollar, I guess your program, another dollar, another two, you know, that's up to you guys what to decide, but I, I think, give him some monetary incentives there, um, you know, to bring him in and, and, uh, and then once he's completed the program. And then I think just give him insurance that, hey, we'll work with you on thirteen days, you know, because there's going to be a commitment there, it's, it's online, but you got homework and, and, uh, you know, family, and so it's, it's, you know, you gotta give him some kind of incentive to, to put in some extra time.
Do we tie anything in with passing the requirements?
Yeah, I would, you know, you got, you got.
That, that could go with like, uh, how you're gonna bump his wages, you know?
And then, but just give him assurances, assurances that we'll, uh, we'll work with you on thirteen days, and then like that, the other thing too is, there's no income, um, cap on the dollar for scholarship, it's just that the state legislature will fund it another year. And so, for some reason they don't, and I reached out to one representative and told them, because Clay County were looking at this too, and I said, there's two counties looking at this, so I would suggest, you know, that we would like to see it, you know, continued. But I think, you know, sometimes they hear it better from supervisors than, uh, maybe from county.
I don't know about that.
I would, I would say, do they have yours as a?
But I would just say, you know, just give Brian some assurances, hey, if, if this does have to cost, they don't fund this program again, you know, cause the other question is, then, you even declared to Brian to pay for that, or will Old Castle, you know, pay that upon your completing the program and, and passing the courses? You know, you can put some stipulations in there, so.
So the county should pay for it if they go back.
Well, it could be like the sheriff's department that can quit, get a certain amount of time, you have to pay that.
You can put, or he doesn't, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll pay the tuition fees upon successful completion, passing of the, of the, you know, the program, so.
Yeah, cause of all the stuff I just gave her.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Just figure twenty-five bucks.
So then start at twenty-six and like maybe bump him up to twenty-eight or twenty-nine upon completion.
Sure. Yeah, and give him some assistance, and it, I mean.
Makes sense, really.
Yeah.
I like that idea.
Yeah, and if, if the boards, we would present that to, uh, Brian, I'll type something up, and, uh, you know, you just don't know what the specifics on there, then, perhaps that will bring him in and, and, uh, the next, uh, uh, board meeting, we have to come turn up, post for his position, you know, for the maintenance side.
Who's the mechanic there now?
Cody Holbert.
Oh, okay. Do we need a motion for?
You're making a motion that, uh, that should be offered at twenty-six dollars per hour with tuition being covered during the duration of course and upon completion to go to twenty-eight fifty.
Okay.
I'll support that.
Motion for support, you agree?
My thought on that is the two fifty jump at that point, basically, if we have to pay for the tuition, covers the tuition while the price, or that cost, the pay is reduced, so, as far as the, the years, number of years agreement, I don't think it would be that necessary if we're.
There's a waiting list now, so depending on when he, when he enters the program.
Sure.
You know. The fall of twenty.
When does that start?
Fall of twenty twenty-two, but they're, they're full right now, so you just gotta get that patient, but not everybody who's on that list, you know, goes forward with the program, so then they call whoever's on the waiting list.
Does he need qualifications to get into the program?
Just, he's gotta fill out the FASA for the dollar tuition, you know, gotta be, uh, but he's got a two-year tech guy, so. Yeah, yeah, so I mean, he's, you know, he, he's fully qualified to enter that program, I can think he already has, unless he's got it.
All right.
And I'm sure in the meantime, Roger can help him with things he may need to know about.
The school of Roger, Roger will be very helpful, I mean, he'll earn a lot right there. Being in the, being in the office and working under him, you know, yeah.
He'll get regular raises in the meantime, too, if he doesn't get it right, we're right.
Yeah.
I would say.
Good.
All right. If I'd be willing to change the motion to a two dollar and fifty cent increase upon completion, rather than tying it to five cents to be eight fifty, so.
Probably better off.
Just make two dollar and fifty cent increase upon completion, that way with raises, it would get that percentage.
Okay.
Right?
It sounds good.
Can you agree on that? I think so, okay, so the twenty-six goes into effect immediately or when he starts the program?
On hire and.
Oh, okay.
Coverage and policies. In the program, when he's in the program.
Cause he ain't gotta find someone to take his spot.
Yeah, so.
He can't start that until I can get somebody to.
So, talking about that there, it's like, just to clarify, when he comes into the office, so after William draws up an agreement and then you guys sign and all agree on it, he can come into the office at that time then?
Unless, unless you're gonna.
Okay, and, you know, so now, when I did talk to Brian, if I need somebody to plow snow, he will help us. And, but I've already got a guy trained on the road grader as we speak, you know, not saying that when I open up the job to in-house, he will take it, but I have somebody learning that. For when Brian steps all the, all through the secondary road.
I would say, once, once he signs that letter, then, you know, like maybe on the twenty-second, uh, uh, get that all signed, then, uh, February twenty-second, they'll come to the board so they can post to that position, you know, and so we can, like, get somebody hired in that position.
Will you draw up the specifics for Brian, or do you want us to do that, or?
I can, I can write up a letter and then I'll, 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 God, or can get it out to everybody, and then he can look over and, uh, determine if that's still in line, whatever, he can revise it. And then, uh, once they're okay with that letter, then I'll get Brian in and, uh, and look at it and, and, uh, and then once we get this signature on it, then.
Okay. Yeah, sounds good. We have a motion in a second, I believe, no?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys. Thank you. You got to put your lighting on there.
Yep, we do, we do a lighting here.
I did drive that intersection last night after we got done with, uh, uh, the caucus, it's black out there.
It is dark.
You can't certainly see the turn into the driveway with the bright lights of the stations. But, I, I think it's very helpful to have a white section.
You know, I, I knew it was dark, but I looked at, you know, and you guys, while we talked about it, and yeah, it is, it is dark. Yeah, it's really cool.
I couldn't hardly touch it.
I can't believe it's that dark. Yeah, with those two businesses right there.
So, Mike did a good job putting together the, the poles for the, for the lighting, and it sounds like there's an IT, ITP pole, which is a traditional end pole, um, in the northwest corner of that intersection, and they will put a light on that, uh, so I don't think it's gonna be as your monthly charge of twenty.
Twenty-three fifty, so.
Yep, and I looked at Clay County, that's kind of what we're paying per, per a light on a pole in the intersection, um, for intersection lighting. So that's a pretty good rate, um, they gotta put a pole in on the south side and a light, then Mike set that out for you.
I can just go over this with you real briefly, cause actually, Rick, the stuff we sent earlier, Rick from Lion Energy, he called me, and I worked on this, that's three thirty, four o'clock last night, but he had a new revision part for us, so. He offered like, cause he wasn't sure about that ITP pole, he had to get permission to put a light on there, so he got permission to do that. So like into the first one, what he would do was, he put a twenty-foot arm on there with a four-hundred watt bulb, and he doesn't have a four-hundred watt bulb anywhere in his neighborhood, so. So that's what he would try there, he recommended trying that one light there, right off there with the four-hundred watt bulb, but if you guys choose to go to two lights, you know, one on each corner, he would drop that down to two hundred fifty watt, because you're overlapping so much and then you, it would not be.
Do you think we can get by with one?
And so, what I recommend is, if you just put that one four-hundred watt bulb on our light on that pole that's there now, you can try it, because they will not put that other pole in until the ground falls, so you would have a couple months to decide what you wanna do. And then you have the options, you know, to buy a pole or rent a pole, um, you know, if you put up another one, you know.
So you could, you could try the one light on the ITP pole, and if you think you need more lighting there, I mean, I would say lighting there at the intersection is better than it is now, maybe improving it. Um, the other thing too that I passed out is an aerial, and if you see it's got the numbers written on it, there's speed zones through there, and there, as you're going west, coming into Sibley, there's a forty-five mile an hour sign that is missing east of the overpass. And so, technically, if you look at the statutes, forty-five is during, you can do that in a suburban district, so that would be at the city limits. Um, so I'm not sure if this forty-five is actually a, um, I don't wanna say legitimate, but, uh, you know, you have to do a little more research to see if there was, you know, cause if you don't wanna follow the statutes with your speed zone, then you have to have a study, you know, an engineering study. Um, I would say you have one forty-five mile an hour sign up there, you know, if you can reduce traffic speed through that intersection, so, right now, because the one-way direction is going west is not signed, that's a, I don't know that they can really, uh, enforce a forty-five through there going west. But you could make it consistent and put a forty-five mile an hour sign up there on east of the overpass, you know, so you start that forty-five mile an hour zone before you go over the overpass, and if you're down to a thirty-five and a twenty-five. And the only thing that would be is if you, if somebody could get it taken and maybe challenge it, but, you know, um, that's what it is. Um, so you could make that consistent, at the sign the other direction, make that consistent, put your light in and then, and there, I did pull the crash data for that intersection, and there were four accidents before this recently, so, before Cook Trip was there, so. So you have some accidents at the intersection, so lighting is a safety feature, um, and so I, I think that probably a good thing, you wanna try to light that up, and then I think, putting the forty-five mile an hour sign up. Plus, I'll just put a couple more, as you come out of the Cook Trip, so people know that, you know, if they're coming from the north, or if they're coming from the south of that intersection, that they're in the forty-five, so again, put a couple more additional forty-five mile an hour signs right at that intersection for traffic for the east end line. So it'd be three signs at the, your intersection line, so.
There isn't one between the south, Paw Ramp and Pierce Avenue, I bet there was a forty-five mile an hour sign over that street.
No, look, if you're going, going east, there is, but if you're coming from, from the east, you're going west, when you hit that, uh, at that, there should be a forty-five at that fifty-five on the intersection, so.
I thought there was one out there too, that would pay that close.
And maybe there was.
There never was.
There was.
I'm not going east.
So this would be three new signs, are you saying, or this forty-five?
Yeah, put three new signs off here out there, so, so you basically, you put a, a forty-five mile an hour sign right there east, east of the overpass, and then as people come, uh, through that intersection, so if they're coming from the south and they're going, they're going west, they have a forty-five there, and if somebody's coming from the north, and then they're gonna go east, put a forty-five there, so they know they're in the forty-five. And that way you make sure that your forty-five is through that, but technically, if you look at the statutes, the forty-five doesn't start those say limits, but, you know, and maybe there was a study or, uh, something years and years ago, that's why it's forty-five. I called the DOT to see, is that a speed zone that they have, because the overpass is, is their jurisdiction, you know, they, they, and they said, no, they said the speed zone would be the Collins, two locations.
I made a motion to close those forty-five mile an hour signs as recommended and to proceed with the one four-hundred watt light.
I'll support that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carried. Thanks for all your time, guys.
You got, you got, well, Mike did a, a lot of the work, got in all the, the, uh, information and hopefully the, and I, that's why I had the insurance here today, because I knew you guys didn't have questions, Mike and I have questions. You know, that didn't seem right on the valuation, and I figured it's better for them to try to answer that to you, um, but, yeah, it's just, it doesn't seem, I agree with, uh, with Jerry, Eddie. Whether, whether, whatever you buy, that should be up to the, you know.
Doesn't make any difference on the value, that's my opinion.
Yeah, but I mean, why should you get less if you, if you don't buy the same thing, I mean?
I normally, the insurance company, if you argue with them a little bit, they'll call.
I came up a little bit on that one, but.
They'll do it over there.
Yeah, but I, I mean, your questions were justified.
I mean, if I totaled up my Cadillac and I decided to buy a Chevy after that, I shouldn't get paid less money? Because I didn't replace the Cadillac.
No, I agree with you totally, yeah, yes, so. All right, so thank you. Thank you, everyone, so.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
You got it. Claims.
Oh, that resolution. Number twenty-three.
What you're reviewing?
I guess that was my motion for the resolution approval and, uh, the signs as recommended.
We did that wrong.
So that we need to do a, a roll call.
Who's that for that?
I did it.
You did, too.
Or you?
Or you? All those in favor?
Roll call.
Mr. Manio?
Aye.
Mr. Helmerzai?
Aye.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Trump?
Aye.
And Mr. DeBord?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Sorry.
Man Coles?
Uh, what's it got, oh, back up the budget review.
Oh. Sorry.
They're getting a little more info on, uh, whatever that software program is. Oh, I wanted, I can see going along with that software program, but not paying for an assistant, a third person up there to help out with that.
I was gonna, with the, they asked Karen to this, with that attorney from the state, and she had nothing but good things to say about it.
They thought it might hold his dismissal.
So, I'd say, uh, any favor? Any thoughts on whether or not, just asking, Sheriff Department? Does want me to be part of it?
No, they don't.
All gonna come out at this point, it sounds like all the rest of the counties to use that software, the county attorney's office is paying for all of that. So, it shouldn't come out of this. So, I'd, I'd like to take that six thousand bucks over the part-time, hope it goes with the software.
Hey, thank you for that.
That was the only thing I had for budget review.
Anything else?
Did we set a hearing date for the property tax levy?
There is.
Did we set a hearing date for the property tax levy?
Yes.
The eighth and the twenty-nine.
Okay.
You made a motion, but with that, this is the public, this is the public notice for that, and there's a slot for any explanation of increases. And as is, there was just decrease there, so the only thing was if you wanted to see the compensation, you could add that on there. Okay.
I think the Department of Management says we're supposed to regard those. I believe the law says only if we increase over two percent that we have to.
It's specifically about any explanation of increases in budget, so.
Yeah, and it's required by law if it's over two percent.
Okay.
But last year they said, we're supposed to do it every time they see, so I don't personally keep it, that, that's.
When they talk about public safety, they're, they're, the United States. So, they're gonna have to have, that's a good idea, Chris. She said there's time to do all that. Any other comments, questions?
Just a question.
What about the, 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 the?
I don't have any.
Any more comments, questions, Jason, anything else?
Um, claims?
Sorry. That's what I was going to ask. Claims?
Do we, do we do a motion for the seven dollars thing? Do we have?
No.
Claims? Any questions, comments? Anything to take out?
Nothing stuck out on the last night, so, I'll make a motion to approve claims.
You have a motion? Do you have support?
Support.
You have support?
Claims.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor?